Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, we have a couple of items. We need to add item six D for grading, Forest Road grading. Somehow that got approved and didn't make the final cut. Item number 10, attorney-client privilege closed session will be at approximately 10:00 or 10:15. So wherever we are in the process, to respect the time of the presenters, will move to that session approximately then. Item 12 C, we're going to pull for a future meeting. And item 12 D, you have new materials on your desk in place of the ones that were on the agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the...
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Public input. Barry, if you want to come up?
Oh, that's Jerry.
You can come up to the chair here.
Please, Chair?
Yeah.
Chair. Well, gentlemen, I'm Robert Horn, I'm Barry Horn, Robert Horn's father. My son is in jail over here today once again.
Barry, do you have to give an address?
A big pardon, sir.
Could you give us an address?
For me?
Yeah.
Twenty-six, seven, seventy-four hundredth Street, La Porte, Minnesota.
Thank you.
And the deputies have had over the years numerous run-ins with him. He had to be tased, he disabled a man's truck by using his pickup as a battering ram. Here, just, I believe it was four years ago, when they haul him away to put him in Prairie St. John's. He's been there like three times or more. No information gets over there for them people to do a search. Something goes wrong between the sheriff's department report that the deputies make out about this violent behavior and how to treat him at Prairie St. John's. Them people have nothing to work with, seventy-two hours later, he's on the street, he's back. I've been a fugitive from him beating me to death, whether I'm in my yard or whether I'm back at my cabin, which is next to him. I live in constant fear. No deputy will go back there. They wait for backup units, and they're a lot younger than me, they have guns, they have tasers, they have K-9 units. I have none of them, and I am not planning on carrying a gun to shoot my son. These people in La Porte that were threatened last week with death threats, he wants to kill Lyle Haug, the owner of the grocery store, Craig Mackey, and he wants for Kevin Day, owner of some coffee house. I know who Kevin is, I have no idea why picks on him. This guy does not belong to be released to the public. So somebody, children, whatever, he's put the fear of God, and even my granddaughter won't get off the bus. The guy she used to love and play on the trampoline or ball in the yard, she will not get off the bus if he's anywhere around. And I'm looking for some help today and some answers why they can't do something with them.
So, Mr. Horn, I just want to interject, so don't take this five minutes away from him. But I spoke with Mr. Chair here, Ted, about the incident after you had made a phone call to me last week. I contacted the Department of Corrections, the state, the one that's right here, and I made a phone call to Corey. I did not get a response back. I don't know if he was busy or tied up on a call or whatever, but I did look into it. And I do apologize for not getting back to you. I don't think that was your request, but I normally do that, just to let you know. But when your number came up, I don't remember what it was, and I lost it in there. But I just want to interject that. And as far as the situation, and I understand where you're coming from, having worked in the mental health field, have worked in law enforcement field, I understand it totally. And I wish that maybe Brian, Jeff, maybe we could make a little...
He's out in the hall.
Hmm, we should have... I think you should bring him in.
I think this should probably be discussed at the county attorney's office.
No, I totally understand that, but he has some concerns, and respectfully, so I just wanted to interject that. Go ahead, I apologize.
I appreciate you at least acknowledging you followed through, but what I'm saying is no deputy just to go there to check on him or whatever should fear for his life on just a simple call or whatever. And I don't understand, I know that people that have mental issues are not really the person they were before. And supposedly, he's out on a deal that he's going to have a further court from some prior stuff. But he's drinking alcohol, and he's smoking marijuana, and I don't know what else. All this is there for the deputies when he come. He had the liquor and the beer and whatever when they took him away this last time. So whether or not that's part of his issues, I don't know. I don't want anybody to hurt the deputies, I don't want him to get killed over nonsense when if it's, he's not in his right mind. Somewhere along the line, we got to work towards getting connected. He was in a violent rage in Bemidji three weeks ago, then again, a little over a week ago, he had a woman in a garage with an axe. And Beltrami County hauled him down here and dumped him loose back there by my driveway again. Shouldn't there be some connection that they do a Department of Corrections search when they pick him up in Beltrami and said, "Is this a fugitive? Do we need to notify Hubbard County before we take him back?" That's kind of a mystery to me. It seems like nobody is following through or doing the proper protocol. You just don't release fugitives or criminals into a neighborhood. That's bizarre, it's totally bizarre.
Thank you for coming today, Barry. Dan and I, like you said, like Dan has expressed, we've discussed it and everything, and Dan's talked to some people. We'll do what we can, but the mental health issue is a big thing, not only in Hubbard County here, but the whole country. And I hope we can try to find your son some help and...
Yep, well, you know, it's kind of a thing where they are kicking the can down the road, not only on Hubbard, but they're building a bigger issue by not treating it or getting them evaluated. Some people they can help, some people they can't. Let's go for the majority that they can, right? Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Are you going to send them downstairs? I'd send them downstairs. Downstairs? To Corey, or not to Corey, but to Jonathan?
Is there any further public...
They're not prepared to handle someone walking in. They need a phone call and a meeting.
Let me tell them that.
Okay.
There's no further public comment? We'll close public comment, and consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve? Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Number four, county employee recognition. Highway Department, Chris Varden, Maintenance Number Two Foreman, is recognized for 15 years of service, effective April 16th, 2022. Cecilia Cantu Larson began her full-time position of Jail Sergeant on April 1st, 2022. William Spats, Spratz began the full-time position of Deputy Dispatcher, excuse me, Dispatcher-Jailer on April 18th, 2022. Adam Hensel, Dispatcher-Jailer, is recognized for his service from April 8th of 2016 to April 18th, 2022. Social Services, we have Ruth Anderson began the full-time position of Social Worker Adult Services on April 11th, 2022. Cynthia Bligh, Social Worker Children's Services, is recognized for her service from October 23rd, 2018 to April 22nd, 2022. And Jonathan Dickinson, with solid waste, began the full-time position of Certified Attendant Lead on April 11th, 2022. Thank you to all those staff.
Mr. Chair, this falls under county employee recognition, but did you want to read the resolution that was approved in the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you for that. Commending the commitment and dedication to public service excellence of county staff and officials by proclaiming April 26th County Government Appreciation Day. Whereas Minnesota's 87 counties employ over 36,000 people to provide essential services to great healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and whereas the work of county employees is fundamental, whether it's a newborn well-checked by a public health nurse, a transport renewal at a license center, or voter registration and ballot processing. And whereas their commitment to public service, county employees dedicate their time, skills, and expertise for the benefit of their neighbors, and at times risk their personal safety coordinating emergency management and managing justice and public safety systems. And whereas the vital work of counties promote healthy communities, fosters conditions for economic growth, strengthens infrastructure, and improves residents' quality of life, now therefore be it resolved, the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners recognizes the commitment and dedication to public service excellence of county staff and officials and proclaim April 26th County Government Appreciation Day. Thank you. Number... Number five, we move on to highway and survey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
A few things for you today. First on our agenda, we've got review and approve quote for 2022 weed spraying. We put out a request for quotes, and we received two back with the low being BNP Weed Control out of Bemidji, Minnesota. The amount of their quote, $37,523.42. We only received two, we sent proposal packets to, I believe it was four, four or five, four companies, and only got the two back. Pretty decent disparity between the two. Don't really know what the actual answer is. They both proposed using different chemicals, maybe that had something to do with it. We called for a product called Milestone after discussions with Greg Hensel on what would work for the issues that we've got with the noxious weeds. And then these two contractors actually proposed two different chemicals coming back. And so I believe the low quote would use a product called Opensight, which actually, according to Greg, works better on more of a variety of our noxious weeds, so that's an okay thing. And it just happens to be he's able to get it for a lower cost. But we budgeted $35,000 for this, that's like an annual budget that we do. Typically, in the past, we've used Greg's services on it. It's tough with everything that Greg and his staff has going on. Greg is the only authorized or the certified sprayer for the county. So in trying to juggle his other activities and time it with the weather, we have a lot of cases where we don't get to it. So we wanted to try this for a year and see how it goes, and maybe we can knock some of these back. So this would actually cover like the north third of the county for this year, and we'll try it on a three-year deal. If we like what happens now, then we'll try it again, maybe with the middle of the county next year and the south the third year, and see if we can get some of these noxious weeds controlled. So it'd be my recommendation to go with BNP Weed Control for the low bid.
Jed, how would this tie in with the townships that generally use Greg?
So this is actually going to free him up a little bit more to concentrate on the townships. I think they had their weed meeting last night, and that was the discussion, was that we were going to go with this contractor if you guys still approve that, and then it would free him up to do more of the township stuff. Yep.
Jed, a while back you did a presentation on some stretches that would be preserved for natural weeds, you know, like the milkweed for monarch butterflies. Have you, does that, tell them what's the status of that?
We haven't moved forward on adopting any type of a policy for the pollinators or the monarch butterfly at this point. But nonetheless, we have, well, we've only got one natural preservation route in the county, that's Cassa 37, up by Cabacona Lake. We left that off of this, we would not spray that. This would take out some of those native flowers on that too, so we would not do that. If we do move towards doing a policy for the monarch butterfly, this would come into play on that too, and we would probably have to leave those areas alone.
Or most of those are on township roads, the smaller roads?
Well, they can be. It depends on which stretches of miles that we would actually include in the monarch management, yeah. You can use various parts of the county, yeah, and some of those would probably end up on township roads.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, not that it's lost traction, we just haven't addressed it, it hasn't become necessary. If they get more serious about listing the monarch as a threat or endangered, then we'll have to probably readdress that. But as it sits, nothing's happening for right now.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the low bid.
Thank you, Dave. And I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next item, review and approve quote for annual pavement marking contract. This is Project CP 29-22-01. This is an annual contract that we do to update some of our striping. Put out a request for bids on this one and received two back with the low being Sir Linesalot out of Edina, Minnesota. Amount of their quote was $72,114.60. Sir Linesalot is a company that bought out AAA striping. And AAA striping and traffic marking service were the two companies that we have a longstanding relationship with. So no reason to question the quality of this company. We're comfortable with it, and very, very close, usually these are close. It's just a very minor change in the unit price. We do many, many thousands of feet, so...
I was responsible for 34, pretty close to Coburn's there, because when I was at the mental health board meeting with, you know, some of the clients, and one of them said that I brought up the line over there needs to be paid, because he said he was almost run into by a car, probably didn't see the walking line there.
On the crosswalk?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so Truck Highway 34 would be MinDOT's responsibility, yeah. I don't know if they've got any type of an agreement with the city, since it isn't city limits, but that would be a MinDOT.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
In our last item, we got review and approve quote for the purchase of a large format plotter scanner and copier for the Highway Department Survey and NRM. The plotter is something we use quite a bit, we print out plans on it, we print out aerial photographs. And one thing that we'll also do that we don't have the capability of right now is scanning. And we're trying to get electronic copies of everything that we've got in our records room with some of the larger old plans that are just, we can't do on a regular copier. And so this, we had an old copier that did just black and white, the quality just kept diminishing over the years. We don't even use it anymore, it's back in the garage. We put that on the auction, and then we tried to see if there was a trade-in for our current plotter, which is, you know, it's a decent color plotter, it just doesn't have all the capabilities that we need. And there's, they just get outdated so fast. I think we've had that one for, I don't know, nine, 10 years, something. So we would put that on the auction too, there was no value on a trade-in. So put out there for two comparable machines with those additional abilities of copying and scanning. Received two back, Sheldon Business Solutions out of Duluth was the low at $12,545. That's for a Canon, our current one is a Canon. The competition was for an HP. I think they're both good quality machines, we would be comfortable sticking with Canon, we've had good luck. So that'd be my recommendation, is to take the low. In addition to this, authorize an all-inclusive maintenance contract that I believe is $40 a month plus. Then there's a per charge on the square footage of the prints. But that includes all of the toner, all any maintenance that goes into the machine for that $40 a month. And we would just do that on an annual basis to keep up with it.
All righty.
And this is, it's budgeted, this was in our budget, so...
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Anything else you want to add?
Bit opening today.
Yeah, another bit opening today, we had one last week, and came in just a little bit above estimate, which we were pretty comfortable with with what's going on. The price of bituminous obviously is the driver of those costs, and that was pretty close to what we estimated. I think out of, it was 2.3 million, I think we were about 50,000 overestimate. Not too bad, we'll see how today goes. This is a bigger project up on Cassa 16 that gets let at 2:00 o'clock today. Quite a few tons of mix on that one, so, yeah, hopefully relatively close to what we estimated too. May 10th is a go for the road tour, if you want to put that on your calendars. So we got the bus reserved for that day.
What day is that?
Starting time, May 10th?
What time are we starting?
What are we talking about, 8:30 I think would be a good start, yeah.
Will you meet over there?
We can either meet over there, or we can pick you up here, whatever you want to do. It doesn't matter.
It's easier to start from here.
Yeah, we'll pick you up here at 8:30. We'll do lunch again, and hopefully have you back here at a decent time.
What time do you think you'll be done?
Uh...
Sorry.
3:30, 4 o'clock.
Nice.
I know that's tough for you.
Could you come get me and then just come back down, or do I have to make a special thing like Char? Or I think we did that last time.
Well, we do a loop, so it's...
You'll sound on part of the...
Yeah. We'll talk.
We'll talk.
Yeah.
May 10th.
Anything else on that?
We like it.
Nothing, so... That's all we got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, did you ever follow up with a vendor that does some maintenance on townships?
Um...
Winter maintenance.
Winter maintenance? Well, we have ongoing talks with maintenance contractors, and...
Was it positive?
Not always, no. They're... They run their business, you know. We contract with certain vendors to do maintenance on our county roads. Townships contract as well with those same contractors, but those contractors also do private work. So it's up to that contractor to determine where they're going to put their priorities on it. We don't have a lot of control.
I was just wondering if there was a, if you had mentioned you were going to follow up, but that's all I was wondering.
Yeah, there's been, there's been discussions, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sirs.
Natural Resource Management.
Good morning.
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 First item on the agenda is a review of the April 11th Timber Auction. We had 10 tracts up for sale, all 10 sold in the first round of bidding. Do have to say that the room was full. We had more loggers than we normally have. I was pleasantly surprised to see how many people we had here, so it's always good to see.
Why is that, Chip?
You know, I think there's, I think there's just more competition for the available wood, so... And I think a lot of people were, some of them were just out snooping, kicking tires, so to say.
Is it more local vendors within a community?
Yeah, there was a couple of locals that, you know, normally don't come to our county auctions, but...
So when I look at the percentage of bids, they're all over except for one, and some are over quite a bit. So are the wood prices up?
Prices are, for the aspen is fairly steady. You know, that's just been on a slow gradual incline for the last couple of years. If you take a look at that graph that I provided, the heavy dark line is the trend line. That's a kind of a moving average over a three-period, three-auction trend line. So you can see that it's been coming up slowly, and, which is good, because we don't want it to spike, because those usually tend to come back and bite you. And I was surprised that the prices continued to climb a little bit, given the fuel prices that we're seeing out there. So fuel costs, of course, are a big expense for the loggers, so... So the price of aspen, the average price of the aspen was up to 4203, which is about a $3 increase over our January auction. You know, the Norway pine, a lot of the pine thinings that we had on our auction, for this auction, was actually a second thinning. So you're starting to get into a much more, a higher percentage of bolt material, which is, you know, a lot of that goes to potlatch for saw bolts. And, you know, the problem has always been trying to get rid of the pulp, which there's not much of a market for pulp. So the more bolts you have, the less pulp you have, so it's easier for them to market that product. So those prices, again, constitute an increase in their price, so... And that's why we saw, you know, the large spikes in the pine thinning sales. So the total value for the sale is $390,336.45. And I believe at this time last year, this is about an $84,000 increase in our timber sales from last year. And last year was a pretty good year, so trends are in the right direction for looking like we're going to keep moving forward, so...
Want to know where the nearest craft mill is at to our area, because, you know, do they make paper sacks, cardboard? They take Norway pine pulp, but I want to know how far one is.
Yeah, and Norbord takes Norway pine pulp, and they mix it in. But it's just, it's one of those products that's just a little more difficult to get rid of, because, you know, you have to truck it farther and, so... So pleased with the results of the auction. Any questions on that? Hearing none. Item number two is a quote for four portable toilets at two public accesses and two beaches. The low quote came in from Potty Shack of Park Rapids at $2,438. They finally managed to beat out Bob's Econo Pump. We've had Bob's Econo Pump for many, many years. Potty Shack finally managed to come in just a little bit under them. And we are recommending the low quote of Potty Shack from Park Rapids for a quote of $2,438.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is an item that was brought forward from our last meeting. Again, the Conservation Fund is offering to sell us 46 acres northwest of Emmville. And this is a part of a... And this is a, a part of a larger 600 tra, 600-acre tract that the, the Trust for Public Lands is acquiring and would donate to the county. The reason that this 46-acre parcel was split off again is because this is an area where the proposed Itasca-Hartland Connection Trail will go through. And because of that, we can't use the Lassard-Sams dollars for acquisition. They, they put some restrictions on as far as recreational use, just having designated trails. So we're looking at purchasing this separately, using county funds, and then we can, we can put those trails on there without restrictions. They did provide a contract or purchase agreement, and that requires a $1,000 deposit. And we can use the local title company here, Hubbard County Abstract. And we would have a closing date of June 14th or before. And I think they want to try and close this at the same time as the Trust for Public Lands will be closing on, on the remaining 554 acres.
Is that in Clay Township? That's 66 acres as well?
Forty-six, yep.
Yep.
It is in Clay Township.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I would just note, um, on this, once the parcel is acquired, the county can complete Class B, that paragraph, before I move to approve.
Okay.
Because we talked at, was it the last board meeting, I think, or the work session, whichever one you came to to talk about this? How then, when we acquire this, we need to identify parcels that we can sell.
Motion.
Not that parcels, not those parcels.
No, not those parcels.
The other ones.
Yeah, they'll come up with some that would fit well into the county plan. Parks Department would...
Make that condition?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Give you a second.
I'll second.
Okay, because I wanted that one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried.
And the last item, the added item to the agenda is I have quotes for two different road grading projects that we normally do on, on an annual basis. We split the county up into a north sector and a south sector. We received one quote from Gladen Construction for blading the north half of the county. Their quote is $100 and, $100.51 a mile, which is an increase over last year and, of course, because of the fuel prices, I'm sure. But that, last year, they bid 93.50 a mile. That is the only bid. So we're recommending the low quote from Gladen Construction out of La Porte at $100.51 per mile for grading.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dan. I'll second. Thank you, Tom. Chip, do they just grade once, these roads, once a year?
No, they grade them three times a year. On the, on the north, it is three times a year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Then on the south half, we received two bids. The low quote being from Thielens Excavating out of Park Rapids at $74 a mile. Again, their rate from last year was $66 a mile, so there's an $8 a mile increase. This, um, there's, some of the roads, they do three times, but the Pine Coon, Spider Lake Trails, they do those once a month. So they do those just a little bit more than, than the rest of them, but those, those trails are used quite heavily, so we just try and give those a little bit extra attention. So we are recommending the low quote from Thielens Excavating at Park Rapids at $74 a mile.
I'll approve the low quote.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll second.
Thank you, Char. Any further discussion?
I didn't, was there another vendor you, you had on there for the south end?
For the south end, it was Gladen Construction. They had a big quote at 89.75 a mile.
Thank you. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried.
I didn't look at that, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Solid waste.
I gotta look at that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so I have one item for you this morning. And it is in regards to our regional construction demolition landfill study that we had applied for a grant, applied to get a grant for beginning of this year. So at the beginning of the year, nine counties, including Hubbard, applied from a grant, for a grant from the MPCA to study the future of demolition landfill management for the region. And our grant wasn't originally selected for funding. After discussion among the solid waste managers from a region, we'd like to move forward with this project on our own, since we weren't successful. The original cost of this project was $133,050. And if, assuming all nine counties would participate, Hubbard's share would be $14,783.33. And funds are available in our land, in our landfill account to cover this cost. And I think after, after we didn't, I let you guys know after we didn't get selected for this, that there was another grant round coming later this summer. After considering that and considering how long that would set us back, we felt it'd be in our best interest to move forward, especially since there's no guarantee we would be selected in the next round of grant funding. It's likely going to drag out several more months before we have answers of why we weren't selected. And we might not have answers prior to the next round, uh, next grant round. We feel that if we complete the study, study, study now, we'd be in a much better position to lobby for future public dollars. And if we don't move forward rather quickly, we're going to be, you know, a year or two behind the pack with other counties and other regions, so...
Josh, is, is this then for a regional landfill or is this for each county to still manage their own?
So this would be a study where every county would look at the costs of still managing their own sites.
Okay.
And then evaluate that and then evaluate what that would cost compared to a regional option. So it'd thoroughly, thoroughly evaluate whether it's feasible to op, keep operating single sites or looking at having to go to a more regional facility. And in our situation, if we, if the study would come back showing, you know, regional facility would be the best, you know, northern Hubbard County would be a, a good possible location for that. So I think we have a little more kind of stake in the game compared to other counties as well to moving forward on this project, getting our study done so we can be in the best position to make future decisions on what's best, so.
And can you tell me, are the nine counties all involved with the, the facility at Foster or...
Um, well, the nine counties, it's our other five partner counties.
Yep.
With the addition of Marshall, Cass, and Red Lake.
Okay.
Interesting.
Are they all supportive of using their own funds then?
Um, this, you know, we're kind of just, this is kind of the first step in the, in the process. So we haven't heard from everyone yet. I'm probably the first one to bring it in front of their boards, so.
So what happens if one or some say no?
Um, I think we'd have to come back and, you know, if, if one or two don't go along with it, you know, the cost is going to shrink because there isn't as many counties involved. But we'd have to kind of come back and reevaluate that at that time, so.
Because you're asking for up to 15,000 right now.
Yep.
So Marshall, what was the second one between that and Cass Lake?
Uh, Red Lake.
Thank you. And then there's Bell Trammy and Polk and Hubbard and what are, who are the other two again?
Uh, Clearwater, Menomen.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dan.
And if you need, you know, the funding needs to, or we need to increase, so I'll just come back. I mean, it's important. We look to the future.
I can second that.
I guess we're not, we're not making any less garbage.
No, our volumes keep increasing every year, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
All right, that's all I have, so.
Josh?
Thank you.
Hey, Josh, do you still have crushed concrete there?
Yep.
How many tons or what do you got there?
A big pile.
Because I sent someone your way, his first name is Matt in Akeley Township.
Yep.
Environmental Services.
We were going to buy some anaroka.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one agenda item for the board this morning, and that is the final plat application. It's one that was on last meeting's agenda, and then there were a couple of things that had not been fulfilled that have been subsequently. So it's now to the point of being ready for the board to take action on the final plat. As a reminder, it's a three-lot plat on Spider Lake, fully meets the ordinance. And the couple of issues that we had were getting the two monuments for reference of the plat, two section corners depicted on the plat, which happened. And then we also had a drainage easement, or excuse me, not a drainage easement, a utility easement that runs along the perimeter of the road right away that had been shown initially as 10 feet wide and needed to be 20 feet wide. So that correction was also made, and as a result, now it's ready for the board's action. And staff would recommend approval.
All right. Dan?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Dan? I'll second. Thank you, Tom. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Hey, thank you, that's all I had. And then this gentleman's here to have the mylar signed by you, Ted, when you have time.
You can bring it up right now.
Like to do it now.
Your last signing, we're all there.
Things are going well.
Home before the storm.
Of course, it's always that way.
It's going to get busy when the snow finally melts.
Let me hold that for you.
It's dead.
Yeah, it's just, you see, it looks like one thing, and then when you lay it down, it looks different. Would you like me to put on today's DVD? Which is the 18th?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Are you, are you dead?
Still April, I hope.
And there's a second, there's a second copy to sign also, Ted.
And it's still the 19th?
Yes, it is.
Probably not. It's not an exact size. It's always an estimate.
Can you make sure we do that for him? Did I send him over there to see Brian?
All righty. Looks like finance is next. Perfect timing.
She's been watching us.
You're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item on the agenda that I'm asking you to approve pending all other approvals. That's two bird dogs liquor and tobacco license, and they have bought Foxy's. And we are waiting on insurance documents and a background check.
I'll move to approve.
I'm sorry?
I'll move to approve with the pending.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Char.
I have one comment on some of those that were in the consent agenda.
Yes.
Do you think it'd be a good idea to cross out or redact the social security numbers of the people on...
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry, I did not realize that they were on there.
Right away.
We will redact those from now on. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. And the same with this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything else?
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. I'm with you.
We have the attorney.
I'm on the other side.
Mr. Chair, we'll, we'll skip ahead.
Okay.
Next to bike shop.
Oh, I totally missed this, but somebody from the public said there's a bad, 36 minutes ago, there's a bad echo on the audio. It's a two-second delay.
I got a, I got a similar message, and I don't know that there's anything I can do.
There's usually a little bit of a delay, like I have it on at my desk, just on silent, but I can see who's up at the table. But yeah, there has been a little bit of a, a delay. Like when the meeting was over and everybody was walking out, but the meeting was still playing at a previous meeting. So Chair, members of the board here today from Human Resources to request a new hire starting compensation for our social services supervisor one. It would be the adult services supervisor. Background information is the personnel policy, Section 5. The compensation administration provides for starting compensation above the minimum of the compensation grade range when an applicant has long-term prior experience, subject to approval by the board. The selected applicant brings five years plus prior experience to the position of social, social services supervisor one, as well as adult services work. The recommendation of what is being requested today is to approve the hire of a social services supervisor one adult services at grade 25, step six of the compensation grade range in accordance with personnel policy, Section 5. Compensation administration with paid time off, PTO, to accrue at the sixth year of service and 100 hours of bank PTO at time of hire upon recommendation of the social services director.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Char. And I'll second. And I guess just to note that if we want to get qualified people, it costs money. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then Commissioners, I would suggest that we move ahead to items 12. Kurt Hansen thought he was going to be here today, so I would skip to item 12B, which is the resolution approving redistricting according to the conversation that we had last week.
12B.
Hold on. So I can catch Brian.
Grab my phone?
We didn't have any other feedback, did we, from the public?
I, I received no other feedback. I haven't heard any comments from any Commissioners. The, the resolution...
Because you should be here for that, Bo. Okay.
The resolution for the redistricting just identifies the five districts with... The resolution for, um, the redistricting just identifies, uh, the five districts with the changes that were made, and it identifies, um, the term and the election cycle for the, each of the five Commissioners. Uh, and then, um, this along with the map would be, um, recorded and certified and sent to the state.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve, asking us to wait till Dan's back to take the vote.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Did any of you? I had one comment, and it was positive, did any of you receive any comments?
Just positive comments. Is there a ten line for Secretary State Office to approve this?
We have to certify by next Tuesday, the 26th, and we have to publish by, uh, two weeks from today, May 3rd.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the redistricting, is there any further discussion?
To adopt Plan One.
To adopt Plan One? Alrighty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And then Item 12C, we, we pulled because it's interesting that the satisfaction mortgage actually has, actually has to be done by Twain Investments, which is the county, but, uh, we haven't figured out the numbers on the, or the, the actual authority on that. Uh, we'll bring that back if we need to. Um, but the new item that you have are the, are the new, um, the new agreements related to 12D Heritage Unwind New Market Tax Credit. And, um, this is an update to the ground lease and the lease and other legal framework that was established, um, to hold up the nonprofit agency so that we could qualify for the new market tax credits. Um, working with, um, working with Zachary Cronin of, um, Rep. Anderson Squires in Welsberger. He's been doing this work for us from the beginning, uh, and he's asking us to approve these agreements, pending final attorney review.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Sharon.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave.
So maybe just for the public's, Jeff, correct me if my wording is incorrect, but this is just legal documentation for the things that have already been done.
So yes, for, for, just to clarify, um, back in 2014, when the county was pursuing new market tax credits, there was a nonprofit structure that was created in order to qualify for and hold those new market tax credits. In December of 2021, on December 31st, those new market tax credits were unwound, meaning that, that $4 million, four and a half, $5 million worth of tax credits was forgiven, and that debt was written off. So what we are doing now is we are dismantling the nonprofit agency and the agreements that were created to hold those new market tax credits because they serve no purpose. Um, and then this will just restore the property and the title back to being clear and in the ownership of Hubbard County, um, with the management agreements that we have relative to that, but, so this is just, just the necessary paperwork to unwind the, um, the legal structure that was put in place to hold the new market tax credits.
Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
And then the last items related to that is, is the board approved, um, a brokerage agreement with SLIB Brokerage Firm to represent the county in making the property available for sale back in November, pending attorney review. The attorney review has been ongoing, and one of the statutory requirements that the county has is to actually list the property for sale ourselves in the local newspaper before we can contract with a broker, brokerage firm. So based on the fact that we're clearing up the title work and working with, um, Zachary Cronin, he believes that we are on track, um, to be able to take the next step, which would be to authorize me to put an ad in the paper for the next three weeks, three weeks in May, making the property available for sale. We do have a property description from SLIB, they took all their headings off and gave us all their work to be able to use it. And this is honestly really a, a technical step. Nobody who's qualified to buy the property and operate the property is gonna be able to put a bid in in a three-week period of time, but we have to make it available for sale by the county for three weeks before we can contract with a broker to make it available for sale more broadly. So I'm also asking that the board would author, would make a motion to authorize me to place that ad in the local newspaper along with that description, um, and then to execute that brokerage agreement that the board approved in November after that three-week period has, has passed. And I asked, um, Bradley Klausing, the broker, to provide us with a new contract that would have a start date of June 1st for the six-month period that we talked about back in November, so. Long way around, but we're back to where we thought we were in November, having cleared up the title issues.
I'll move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sharon. I'll second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
And then Commissioners, Kurt Hansen has just joined us, so we are gonna go back to 12A. Heritage Revenue Loss. And we're gonna talk generally about the financial condition of, uh, Heritage Living Center and the county support and the relationship between the county and the Heritage Living Center at probably an upcoming meeting in May or June. But today, what we are doing is we were asked to review, uh, revenue losses for the first two quarters of operation for Heritage Living Center. And I've stated that a couple of different ways. So October 1st is the first of the fiscal year for, um, for Heritage Living Center, and now at the end of March, we're through, we're through two quarters of that. This sheet, I gave you a new one of, you'll see that this number that I'm highlighting here is incorrect. On the new copy that you have, that was just me reading it incorrectly, um, is $6.291 million of revenue for 2021. There's a couple of asterisks that you'll see on the new copy that you have as well. 2020, the Heritage Living Center Skilled Nursing revenues include $449,000 of HHS funds. In 2021, that's $6.29 million, includes ARPA funds of $1 million and, um, HHS funds of $110,000. So you'll see that that was on board there. But the more, the more important piece is I asked Kurt to provide me the operating, um, revenues of the, of the three units, um, for the first, for the first months of operation of 2021, 2022 fiscal year. And you'll see that the total revenue for the three units is 462,000, 461,000, 420, an average, um, of approximately $440,000 per month. And if you go up and look at 2019, the year before COVID, we can see that we had $740,000 a month in average revenues. So from this operating report, just a revenue operating report, we can see that our operating revenues are $300,000 a month short. The next item. I'm gonna go back to the top, is, um, this is our, this is our operating reports from the county, um, accounting system. And you can see that we're showing a loss over the first six months of $1.13 million in those three fund accounts.
And that's after we've already given them a million.
Those are just operating losses, yes. And, and, and that million dollars that we gave in ARPA funds would have been in the previous year.
Yep.
Yep. So that's, and this is to place into context the question if and how much the board wants to allocate to the ARPA funds balance that we have. Uh, last May, we got half of that $4.1 million. In May this year, we'll get the other half of that $4.1 million, so we have approximately a million dollars in that account to be able to allocate. And then the last report is, um, a trial balance report. And the, the punchline for the trial balance is that over the first six months of heritage for, for the current fiscal year is $900,000, um, loss and a total fund deficit of $1.8 million. So, I have to figure out and understand why it was that at the end of one year or the other, we didn't reconcile that to a zero and show the, show the balance transfers that we needed to do that, because I don't, I don't know that there was or wasn't a, a determination made to balance that account. But that account has carried forward from 2020, 2021 to, into 21, 22. So we're currently carrying a deficit, um, in the trial balances in those three funds of $1.8 million. So with $300,000 a month, times six months, we're at 1.8. When you actually look at the numbers, the loss is less because our expenses are lower, because we don't have the staff to be able to carry the occupancy, so we're at 1.13. But it does appear that there's, that, that there's a, a revenue loss greater than a million dollars in the first six months of operating. And that, that would be the summary that I have to say that it might make sense to use ARPA funds to fill that gap, um, because if we don't, we're gonna end up using some other county source at some point.
And I, I would just like to add a comment too, that, that, that does not, I mean, this is operating revenue. It does not include, uh, the amount that's obligated in debt payment.
Or the money that we've paid on ECPN.
I think, and you can check that, good morning, by the way, everyone, um, you, you could check that, but I think the principal and interest payments are shown in the bond, in the deficits, but Kay would be able to, uh, address that succinctly.
And Kay and I will bring that forward in May or June when we talk about the entire financial relationship between the county and, and the Heritage Living Center, um, and I'll verify that.
So basically to shore up the fund balances, 1.8? 1.8?
To shore up the fund balance, the current fund, the, um, yes, the fund balance would be 1.8 million dollars. We do not have 1.8 million dollars in the ARPA fund, we have just barely over 1 million dollars.
Um, so just as we're talking about those numbers, um, you know, you look at that history there, you can kinda see, we're all too familiar with the impact of COVID and what that had with our drop-off of revenues and, and, uh, people not utilizing long-term care services, our services. I think that's what caused the initial reduction in revenue, i.e., you know, patient numbers and tenant numbers in our assisted living and skilled site. And so, um, what's happened really since, as we've gotten into this fiscal year, uh, the people are coming back, but we just don't have the workforce to support the levels of patients that's right now required to, to make back that revenue. And, and I know we're not alone in that, um, everybody's struggling with it. Obviously, we're more public with it, uh, because we're a public entity. Um, but there's many, many providers that are, are grappling with this very issue. Even getting to the point where we're wondering if we had, would have enough licensed, uh, nurse personnel to cover 24-hour-a-day skilled needs. So that's really been our challenge, uh, working hard to try and get our workforce back. The only way we can dig ourselves out of this is if we can gain an appreciable amount of staff to meet our residents' needs safely and then be able to take more residents in. Last August, we closed the second floor of our building because of that. At that time, it's because the demand wasn't there, but now we're seeing referrals on an uptick. More of that flow is getting back to normal, and so there's opportunity there. And we've set goals and targets for hiring to get to move back to the second floor, uh, where we can open up one of the neighborhoods. And that's more future discussion talk, that's what we're working on right now. But we have the aftermath, as indicated by the spreadsheet up there, of what we've been through. And, uh, we're working on getting things going, uh, with more aggressive pay plans, you know, just a whole variety of things we're doing, like everybody else, to try and recruit and then retain, uh, the good people we have. So, um, I guess if there's any good news, uh, we just recently have covered our night shift for licensed nurses. That's a step in the right direction, it's not the solution, it's a start. We have targeted now how many certified nursing assistants and residence assistants we need for a skilled site and assisted living, uh, not only to fill slots, but also to replace the traveling staff that we've had to utilize to fill some of these, um, crucial slots. And, um, we're starting to see a little motion with that, but it's just taking so long. It's just such a long, arduous period. The other thing is, is, you know, we're, we're working very hard on that locally, but we're also looking to the state and also to the national, uh, scene, um, working with our legislators, working with our federal representatives, um, making our story known, letting them know what we're all experiencing is long-term care. And so, um, we continue to work on that, I'll give periodic updates. I'm sure our, our board reps, Commissioner Christensen and Delahunt will continue to provide updates too. And, uh, we, we keep working that track. The other thing that we've done is that we've made reductions again, um, temporary, we hope, uh, in ancillary departments, more hours, uh, per pay period to try and continue to reduce those expenses so that, uh, losses can be, uh, turned around and eventually we can build back. The Heritage cottages is probably our, our most effective program right now financially in that we're full, um, that's good news. That, that, over time now, that fund balance can and will get back to zero and above, above and beyond. The manners of work and progress, um, that, uh, we continue to pursue new occupants for, uh, it's a great opportunity. And then the skilled site is really where the most work is being placed just because it's the more complicated, bigger budget item. And, uh, we're, we're, we feel like we're making progress, it's not showing yet just because there's such a lag in the financials and the cash results. But it, it, you know, we're, 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 we're working at it. This is where relief funds, these federal relief funds are just so greatly beneficial, and will be for our operation moving forward, uh, whether we have the current existing situation or in the future, as you talked earlier about the sale, potential sale of it. Uh, the, the new ownership group would certainly have to have something to work with also, so we keep on track to, to balance that operation, to, to make it become, um, viable, financially viable, so. And that's where we're at, I guess I'll open it up if there's any questions or any, any more detail you'd be interested in knowing about this morning.
You know, we will not have enough CNAs, what's being done to maybe educate in getting them licensed?
Well, we're, we're fortunate, we've had both the Nevis High School Health Occupations Course kids come through, and we've had the Park Rapids, uh, Health Occupations, uh, kids come through. So I think that's a start, that was approximately 20 students. Park Rapids has one more clinical, uh, session onsite. Um, we're talking with these students about job opportunities and things. We know the governor's effort last year, the goal is to, uh, train and hire 1,000 certified nursing assistants. I think they met that goal, I think there's a greater awareness now of this career opportunity and the career paths that can lead to, if you you want to get into healthcare. So I think that we're getting the word out. I know that we're going to be talking with our local newspaper today about the Nevis students coming in. Our director of nursing will be visiting with the reporter about that. Try to get the message out there. Try to let people know that's a viable option. The other conversations we're having is locally with our employment groups. We had a job fair the other day. We had a lot of visibility with that. Of course, there's a lot of people looking for good staff. But it was a good chance to get out in the public and tell our story. There's, it's always a little bit surprising when people say, well, what is Heritage? You know, you kind of think you're there and people know we're a, we're a large, viable, wannabe viable healthcare entity in the community of Park Rapids and the county of Hubbard. And it's kind of surprising people don't know about that. So we're working on that. We continue to advertise and market, if you will, what these jobs entail. And we're just trying to tell that story about a very rewarding and fulfilling career path a person might take.
So we haven't received the second allocation of ARPA funds yet, have we?
We have not. We have, we have one point, we have 1 million dollars essentially to work with at this point.
Yeah. So part of this, part of the struggle with all this is, this is an industry-wide labor shortage, not only in congregate settings, but healthcare in general. And it's deep. And it's, it's not going to be easy to, obviously, you can't train an RN or an LPN in 13 weeks.
No.
It takes years. So you can train a CNA in 13, 16, 18 weeks and get some relief there. But the RN and the LPN problem could continue for several years. That's a struggle. Can, can Heritage as itself win that battle? Potentially. Can the industry as a whole, everyone, win that battle? No, there's not enough people. It's a real struggle. That way, six more months of losses at the rate we're going will exhaust all the ARPA funds that the county received, every, virtually every bit of it. After that, it's county taxpayer money on the line. So the real hard part about this is, can you get it turned around in six months under the environment we're in? Probably pretty unlikely. Can we, can we make some marginal differences? Yeah, probably, which, which we are working on, you know, every, every day, trying to get more staff in, which will lead to more residents, which will tamper those losses down slowly. But how long will it take?
Just to, just to note, statewide, there currently are about approximately 24,000 people needed for the long care facilities, just in the state of Minnesota. So when you're talking staffing shortages.
You know, it's kind of interesting, just in pulling data together, I was going through, one of our internal team projects was to build our staffing levels, which, I mean, you have to admit, long-term care has struggled with staffing for years. I've been at this a long time, and it doesn't seem like you ever feel like you have an ample amount of personnel. It was 2013, and one of the leaders within our Nursing Home Long-Term Care Association, I quoted in there, and it was something to the effect that by the year 2020, we were going to be facing severe workforce shortages. Demographics are showing out that with people retiring and the changes that are occurring, that what is difficult now will be made worse by 2020. And I always had it in the back of my mind the last few years, 2025 was the magic year. But I think there's a lot of truth to that, just based on what Commissioner Delahunt mentioned, our sheer demographics, is that tangible group of potential people to work in long-term care is a very thin line. And so we have to be able to get the word out there and make sure that we're targeting the right audiences and the potential for people to work. It's promising that we have now, for the first time in two years, solid night licensed nurse coverage. That's encouraging. We are going to be advertising now for another nursing assistant program. And so that will help to get some more people. It's PMs and nights. It's our days. And I think there's been a lot of studies done about the challenge of just getting people to work odd shifts like that. And so there's some barriers against success. But we've had it all the time, and there's always seemingly been enough. So we're focusing on that, creating some target incentives, doing what we can to get turned around. I mean, we're just keep working and trying and working and trying. And so that's, I mean, on the side of getting federal relief, we don't, wouldn't want to have to ask for federal relief. We'd rather be able to going on our own like we did for the previous how many decades as a county entity. So that's our task.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
So Mr. Chair and Jeff, would it be appropriate then to have some sort of motion that would approve ARPA funds, a million dollars of ARPA funds being used to take care of a portion of the debt and another 800,000 when the second allocation comes in?
I think it's, I think it's most important to address the operational needs right now. So I think a million dollars now and something else. The, the request was made to bring this up on a quarterly basis for review. So we've just, we're at the end of the second quarter of the year. I think that by the time we get to the end of the third quarter, some other things will become clear. A, we'll have additional ARPA funds in hand. B, we'll have a better understanding of what we need to do to balance the books. So I think, I think a motion to clean up the revenue shortfall in the amount of a million dollars is what we can afford to do now and would make sense to balance so that hole doesn't keep digging. I think the balance, if it can hold forward until three months from now, when we, when we're looking at that third quarter statistics.
I would make a motion to allocate a million dollars of ARPA money to Heritage Campus.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Shar.
I, I'm going to add two comments, actually, three. One is, I really want the community to be able to retain what Heritage does for services. With that being said, when we had the audit, the auditor was not very positive in being able to dig out a hole this deep. This is really dire. He commented that he doesn't foresee how this will be able to turn around. And third, I'm glad we have the ARPA funds to do this. However, just to note that every dollar that we have to use here are dollars that we cannot use for economic development in the rest of the county.
I was going to call those people and let them know, whoop, we don't have any money left.
We've had conversation with everybody and told them that we wouldn't have any other updates until May.
This is our obligation. And so we need to do this.
It's a, it's a good thing we have the funds available. It's just bad that we have to use them here.
Yeah.
I'd agree.
There's no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Let's go into some positives.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chair, we have, we have our guests joining us for the closed session. But before we get to that, I want to just cover very briefly, the only items that I would have in our administrator report would be to identify who's going to be attending the department head meeting next week.
It's my turn.
And I think we knew that.
Charlene.
And then, and then the second item is, our next meeting will be my one-year anniversary here. So I will be getting information out to you relative to an administrator review process, similar to what we did at the six-month. So look for that. I'll have Denise facilitate that and get that out to you. And then we have our guests online. I think we can, Jonathan, did you want to do your one action item before we get to the closed session?
We could. If it wasn't for the word, it's a little too long because it was in the packet on that proposed order.
For the hazardous building.
For the hazardous building, correct.
And this, we discussed this. This has been kind of ongoing. This is the, this is a different one than the one that...
I believe this is a different one.
Yeah, because the pictures didn't match up.
No, we had done one about a year ago.
Yeah.
And that did resolve the issue in that the landowner ultimately, in that case, without bringing up that particular case, did ultimately raise that, or raise the building. And then I believe was working with Eric, if hasn't already done so, to rebuild on that property. That was a lakefront property as well. So that worked out positively.
Right next to where?
Yes, Shar, this is in my district, and the neighbor called me about it, went out and looked at it. And then I brought it to Eric's attention.
It's right on the road, I think. Is it the one, the property that's behind the old Goose Crossing that's now a by church? Is that where it's at?
It could be. I'm actually not sure. I know it's on Long Lake, and I've looked at the parcel itself. And obviously, the documentation adds to the building's quality.
It's not only an eyesore, but it's probably only about 30, 40 feet from the neighbor's house. So it's a fire hazard as well.
I think that's in the, in the packet where it's at, per the parcel. And that neighboring parcel, there's a house right there. I would note, just for the board, obviously, my recommendation is to sign the order. That would result in us mailing that to the property owners who appear to live down in South Florida, at which point they will have until September to make a decision as to if they're going to raise it or destroy the building and rebuild or do nothing. And if they do nothing, then I would file with the district court the order and ask the county to, do it, do it on taxpayer money ultimately. And that's why I put in my recommendation, or in my, putting, putting it on the agenda today, I did say that there is a possibility that this could result in taxpayer money in the cost of actually destroying the building. I can say that that has not been the case in the last times that we have done this. And I hope that that would not be the case here as well. But that is a possibility.
But can the cost be assessed to their, their property taxes?
It can, yes.
And then we could do it that way?
We can, absolutely. Just the upfront costs. But you are correct, ultimately, it can be recouped, yes.
And is this, is this the only building on their property?
Yes. It's an old cabin, as far as I can tell. That's been there for, for a long time.
I appreciated the pictures. Thank you.
You can thank Eric over at Environmental. He provided those.
And it doesn't look like there's any foundation under this building. It looks like it's on, I can see some concrete blocks and stuff like that, so.
It hasn't been cared for, obviously, for a while. And...
The owner said a deer died in there. And they, I wouldn't have been able to stand it, but they said they went in there and bagged it up and got it out of there.
It is a beautiful piece of property as well. So there's a lot of possibility there. But from an environmental, and I know, I won't speak for, for Josh from Solid Waste, but this building needs to be taken down for safety reasons. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the order.
That is a motion.
I'll second.
Tom already did.
Tom already did.
You're on luck.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now, before we go into closed session, I was asked if we could take a five-minute break?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So what I would ask is for a motion to close the open session and open the closed session?
Also move.
Second. All right. Who got the second there? Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll come back in five minutes.
Eric should have been here for that.
Not yet. Not yet.
Is that your neighbor, just my neighbor, Karen? It wasn't an old guy.
All righty.
Dave, did you get Zach's info? Dave?
Can you verify that we're back up?
Did you get Zach's info to text him? I sent Zach's info to you at the county phone.
Oh, sure, thanks.
Yes.
Okay. Technology has caught up with us.
All right, so next on the agenda, committee reports. Who wants to go first? I can't, I don't have a lot here. Plan on touching on Heritage some, Shar? The executive meeting at all, or?
You can go ahead and do it if you want to.
In the executive meeting of Heritage Campus Board and basically just work through, work through the issue of staffing, trying to put some strategies in play to generate some interest in positions that are available, and we've had some mild success with a little bit that already, so that's good news. Kurt mentioned got the 24 hours, the overnight nursing position squared away, at least temporarily, so that's helpful, and hopefully we'll get some more interest and more applications, and we up some incentives and some pay incentives and things, so hopefully that'll have some benefit in promoting those things. Other thing, I had an airport commission meeting last Wednesday, first one in a year. Kind of surprised, I was wondering if I was missing them, but they are going to now schedule quarterly, but not necessarily meet quarterly, depends if there's business to take care of or not, but at least they're going to get it on the calendar, so a year is a little too long to be going in between those. And then we had the Deep Lake meeting on the regional part there, we were updated on that at our last meeting.
What about the Fair Board?
I will not make Heritage meeting next Tuesday. I'll be coming home at that point. Traveling.
Yeah, that'd be great, you want to?
What time is that?
1:30, this room.
Hour?
Oh, no, two hours. But you can come for the first hour and then leave.
Okay, what day is it again?
Tuesday, 1:30.
Tuesday, 1:30.
Yep, that's it for me.
Hey, Dave, what Fair Board? Have any updates or meetings with the Fair Board?
Oh, that's actually tonight.
We're getting, um...
I'm going to try and go tonight.
Park Rapids?
It's really, it's really hard, actually, for me sometimes to get there, because I have three meetings that day. But yeah, I'm going to try to go tonight.
Just kind of wondering what the update is as far as, you know, transportation in that building and what they're going to do, thoughts about that?
Yeah, because the bus garage is part of the new referendum, wasn't it? With the school, did that, was that part approved with it, so?
But just kind of wondering what, what are they doing with that? Because then we need to think about, or they should think about, how they're going to recoup them funds.
I know we had preliminary discussion on that, that there may be some interest in the county doing something with it, but we'll see. See what they think their plans are. They might have a total different plan.
Tom?
Yeah, we had the Leach River One Waterset One Policy or One Plan Policy Committee meeting last week, and the primary thing on the agenda was to approve the budget for the next two years, which will be the same as the last two, which was $598,000, $115,000. And just maybe add that out of that, $15,000 will be allocated for Hubbard County to upgrade another truck for brining, so that'll make two trucks. And I think the discussion is even if needed, the crow wing one will have that included in their implementation if there's a need for a third truck, then there'd be enough to do the entire county with brining. And that's about it.
Okay, Shar?
At the Prime West Board, membership is up in February, there was a total of 51,115 members, that was up 639 members from December. If you recall, Minnesota's not taking anybody off at this time, so they're guessing the actual membership is around 48,000, and they're accruing money that they'll have to return to the state whenever that is done. There's approximately 14,000 providers in the network for services for doctors and dentists, et cetera, et cetera. And Prime West is the only insurance company that I know of that answers every single call with a person. The average wait time is 14 seconds. So the RFP submission to DHS for the contracts for next year were submitted, the seniors contract consisted of 1,896 pages, with 627 pages of responses the staff had to do. Special needs was 1,810 pages with 572 response pages, and the family and children contract was 1,521 pages with 673 pages of response. Forty-three staff members out of the 165 total Prime West staff, excuse me, developed this. It was over and above their daily work, so the Prime West Board voted incentive pay for $151,000 to be divided amongst those 43 staff members. One person would receive $10,000 because that person had to proof every single page, excuse me, on all those documents, and then it would be divided up with the rest, depending on what kind of work they did. Excuse me, I have one more thing, but I gotta take a drink. HRA Board met last night. We are going to be doing a strategic plan in the next couple of weeks to give direction where we're going, and also for them, Mary, to prepare to come to our board to see if the commissioners would approve of the direction the board wants to go because of the levy dollars involved. There's, we still have a Mural program going, which is Minnesota Urban Revitalization Program, and it was started way back when. There is one recipient of that that will be completing their 20-year mortgage, it'll be paid in full October this year, and for 20 years, they've paid $675 per month, always on time. The three occupants of the house are all employed, but they have mental health issues, and so they will not qualify for a loan, and currently the roof of the house is leaking so badly that it's damaging the interior. So the board voted to approve an internal loan starting in November of 2022, then, which would be the month after their house payments are paid in full, at 4% interest with three years of payments of $442.86. This has been a practice that's been done in prior years for anybody on the Mural program. And the HRA is on, on the mortgage, so we can use the house for collateral, but, you know, they've paid the last 20 years, we don't think that this will be a problem. So Mary was going to work with them to get this started, and if they can't find someone to shingle, in the meantime, they're going to find someone to put tar on, so at least the interior damage isn't, but the $15,000 will cover the shingling and the interior damage. And then we're going to, I'm going to connect Mary with Dan from MRC, because currently the Mural program has been discontinued in the state of Minnesota. Hubbard County has a balance of $319,635 sitting in our bank, and the state wants all the money returned after the last Mural loan is totally paid for. What we're, what we're going to work with MRC to do is to try and get the legislative process going that all Mural dollars throughout the state of Minnesota would stay with the HRAs where they're at instead of being returned to the state, so we could actually do some more work for low-income housing. And that's what I have for that.
Thank you, Shar. Dan?
Yes. Okay. So, let's see, I can't think politically correct. So Hubbard and Prevention is continuing to work through our federal funding with the different school districts and providing resources to help them either understand or implement and/or make their little area of the world so much better. And the districts are reaching out now, more so than in past, for assistance. We're having a summit for professional staff throughout the county, Park Rapids and Nevis and the port on August 30th, Minas, Minnesota Minas Summit.
On August 30th? That's when, that's when the ACES seminar is?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to do another one, and so we're diligently trying to piece all the pieces of the puzzle together and get speakers and get everybody to and from. Of course, North West Junior Training Center, just giving you heads up, will be interesting on Monday, we have a couple of little issues we need to address, and of course Hubbard and Extension next week. Otherwise, things are good. You?
Thank you.
I just had one, Healthy Hubbard County 2030. There, of course, we discuss the health of Hubbard County. Of course, COVID is a top thing on there normally. Numbers, county numbers have decreased substantially, only 10 cases so far in April, but they also think maybe some of this is due to a large number of home tests that are unreported. The Father Project ended on April 2nd, and there's no new funding available.
Oh dear.
Yeah, Joe Johnson resigned.
Oh dear.
For that, and they're looking at options to provide services through our other programs, including family home visiting and ACES Coalition.
Well, that is a true loss.
Yeah, yeah.
So CHI isn't going to get involved, or can Brian from Social Services help to assist?
Well, I guess, like I said, they are looking at other options.
So those would be two really good options, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
And I would probably venture out and see if they'd assist.
WIT Coordinator started, the new coordinator, discussed the formula recall and the ongoing shortages, so obviously there was a major recall on baby formula, and then all of a sudden now you have nursing or children that need the formula, so they've been scrambling to try to fill that need. Then there was the Community Health Needs Assessment Survey that CHI St. Joseph Health puts out. This year, we had 500 and some odd participants, which is a great turnout. The five major topics or community needs in order was number one, mental health, number two, substance abuse, number three was a youth community center, four was the cost of health care, and five was obesity.
What was the fifth one?
Obesity.
Lovely.
And I think what I'd like to do is send this, the Community Health Needs Assessment to Jeff, so then he can share it with the board. He's got a lot of demographics, needs in the county, how we compare to other counties, and stuff like that, and it kind of gives you an idea that we're, we're not doing any worse than our neighboring counties, and in some areas, we're doing better. And that's all I have for today. Is there anything further? Any meetings we've got, you know, about next Tuesdays?
Yeah, the May, the agenda for the May work session will be the highway tour, so we'll publish it as that, and we'll publish it as being public, and publish the change in times, that if any members of the public or the media want to join, they can.
Otherwise, I'll look for a...
So move.
Second.
Thank you all.
The Heritage Board, Kurt, and then Kate.